First on the agenda, we have the approval of the agenda. Make the approval. Next on the agenda is certification of the discipline election result. In the package, you see Policy BPA, Screen Board Powers and Beauties. Right after that, Policy BPF, Screen Board Member Ethics. Our board members will receive a hard copy of Policy BPF, Screen Board Member Ethics. Board Secretary will read Policy BPF. All important numbers made of policy will receive. The information from Policy BPF by signing and dating. Copy of Policy BDF.
Of course.
Yes. Next on the agenda, we have the election of Board President. Next is the election of the delegate for. Josh.
Josh.
Finally, the election of the office candidate.
Hi. I'll go back in.
I'll think of what to do during the Republican Party. Board of Education. Organizing Districts for R2, County, Theory, Regular.
All right, back open session. Next, the meeting is the St. Martin Board of Education Laws. This evening. Decision-making, focus on the best interest of students while ensuring that decisions are financially responsible. Take into account current data, consider the impact on our staff, and align with our mission of working together to create success in things we are doing. Preparation and effective use of time. Come prepared to Board of Education meetings by reading the Board's大纲 as far as the Board of Education meetings, or actively asking questions to allow time to answer collectively and research and then share it at the meeting. Speak with one voice. After deliberations, consent to some subject, you pull it together as a collective board, while supporting the decision through words and actions privately and publicly. Do not speak to the actual board without a public discussion. Act as ambassadors for the St. Trinity Barfield District by consistently advocating for public education. Saying of the day, Catholicism is just impending around this district. And listen to understand, communicate with respect and value diverse perspectives, opinions, contributions, of all district stakeholders, including fellow board members, students, their families, employees, patrons, and community members. Be open-minded, engage in active listening while being aware of non-burdened behaviors as well. Hurry, honest communication. Nature of spirit of farming, cooperation. Next on the agenda is the MSBA must.
Welcome to the April edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look back at the beginning of MSBA's Spring Advocacy Series. The Spring Virtual Meeting was held on March 13th and featured a presentation by Dr. Stephanie Cuevas, an Assistant Professor of Education at Atala College of Educational Studies at Chapman University in California. She is the co-author of the scholastic book Everyone Wins: The Evidence for Family-School Partnerships and Implications for Practice. Dr. Cuevas considers it imperative to consider the significant and central role that families play in shaping the educational experiences of students. During the session, she said that although board members aren't involved in the day-to-day of school operations, there are still many ways that they can help promote family involvement.
And I think it's just advocating for it, right? And again, really, how are you defining parent involvement, family engagement, and understanding that it is a variety of things, right? It's not just a very typical, we used to call it, you know, moving beyond the bake cell, right? That is not just, you know, families doing that. But again, something that folks that are not in the nitty-gritty of schools every day can advocate for is like, how do we get creative about developing the educator's capacity to do that? Another way is always, you know, advocate for more funding for it, right? So I think that those are two ways to like, really think about like, well, what is needed in my local context, district level or state level? And really, how do we help both educators and families learn how to work with each other? And that's through capacity development, often being professional development and making a requirement. Like I mentioned before, in a lot of research shows that, you know, I, as a teacher, I as a principal, am expected to make these relationships happen, but I don't know how.
The first luncheon learned of the Spring Advocacy Series featured an interview with Dr. Margie Van Deven, conducted by MSBA Executive Director Melissa Randall. The discussion covered a variety of topics, covering many of Dr. Van Deven's experiences, opportunities, and challenges she faced as Commissioner of Education. She explained that regardless of your role in education, staying focused on your why is key to serving.
You know, it is about serving every student every day. I mean, it just that, you hear that often throughout our state, but it is, that is the why. And what I have found to be a little bit challenging at the department level, sorry, this is longer than 30 seconds, but it is always about what's best for our kids. And people remind me that it is, I'm much removed from that student in the classroom at Jefferson City at the, in those. So what can I do? A lot of times, my why shifts to, how do I lift up those we serve, our students, by lifting up those who serve them? I view, you've heard me say that. And our job really at the department is, is how do we put systems or policies in place that help the local leaders do their jobs in a better way to better serve our kids? Help them, help our students.
Dr. Van Deven also thanked school board members for their support during her time as Commissioner.
That is probably one of the first things I learned in my role at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and working with school improvement efforts is the critical role that our local school board members play. And I have grown in relationship with many of the local school board members across the state. So thank you for your support, for your professionalism, but also for your friendship throughout this time.
State Senator Carla Esslinger will be Missouri's next Commissioner of Education beginning in June. Esslinger will continue her work as a state senator until June 1st, when she will join Dr. Van Deven in the Commissioner's spot and begin the transition. The deadline is approaching to sign up for your district's free emergency operations plan development tool. MSBA, in partnership with the Department of Public Safety, is offering another school safety improvement program for fiscal year '24, expiring on June 1st of this year. The program funding provides public school districts that did not participate in last year's funding program with one-year-at-no-cost access to MSBA's online emergency operations plan development tool, MoEOP. Any Missouri public school district or charter school not using the MoEOP tool should take advantage of this limited-time offer. John McDonald, the Chief Operating Officer of MSBA Center for Education Safety, says that it's more important than ever to have a good emergency operations plan.
I responded to and managed school threats and emergencies for the past 16 years. And what I know to be true is that the school threats of today are more complicated than ever before. And the very best school safety, prevention, preparedness, response, and recovery begins with a robust emergency operation plan. At CES, we believe strongly, like all of you, in the duty to protect our students and staff. And it was with this in mind that we created the web-based Missouri Emergency Operation Plan Tool, also known as MoEOP. The 247 districts across the state have been using for the past year. The MoEOP tool, with your input, will provide you with a safe and secure, web-based, all-hazard, school emergency operation plan.
Visit the MSBA website for more information on how to register for your district's free MoEOP tool. Make your plans now to attend MSBA's Summer Summit, June 24th and 25th in Branson, joining school board members and leaders from across Missouri to learn about emerging trends and hot topics in education. It's a great opportunity to participate in valuable sessions and to connect with your colleagues from school districts across the state. Also, be sure your board is represented at the June Delegate Assembly to be held in conjunction with the Summer Summit. Delegates will be electing state officers for the coming year at that meeting. The nominating committee is proposing a slate of officers for consideration, including the offices of President-elect and Vice President. You can watch video interviews with the candidates for state office posted on the MSBA website. Registration information for the Summer Summit is also posted on the website. And last, but certainly not least, if you are elected to your school board for the first time this month, welcome to school board service. Missouri law requires all school board members to receive 18 and 1/2 hours of training within their first 12 months of service. MSBA's new board member training fulfills this requirement and provides the foundation for becoming an effective board member. The training is free for all new board members. Check the MSBA website for a schedule of training opportunities along with registration information. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in May for the next MSBA Board Report.
I wanted to share, four of us, Gettinger, Mr. Diesel, Reece Singer, myself, went to Jeff City for Advocacy Day last Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yeah, it was the day of the eclipse.
Day. We fought the traffic.
Yeah. Spoke with, yes, Monday, I'm sorry. Spoke with several legislators about a few bills, one of them that's probably being considered tonight, that will expand charter schools and will expand vouchers. Not something that we're looking to do, to take money out of public schools and put into private hands. We did get positive feedback from Rick Francis. We weren't able to talk with him, but we did receive positive feedback from him that he would vote against it. Elaine Gannon, she's in the Senate, it has already passed the Senate, but she voted against it. And Dale Wright, Dale Wright. We spoke with Mike Henderson also. He said he was a no, but we were worried, so.
And to note, he's running for state senator, replace Elaine Gannon, so his vote is crucial for us. So I had asked Dr. Taylor to reach out to the superintendent that he represents near St. Francis County. Sure, Dr. Taylor did that to have them voice their opinion for him as well, so he can hear, you know, where we're at with public education. The bill itself, the reason it's detrimental is there's no guaranteed funding for transportation or even the foundation for it. So they're going to push more money to vouchers and charter schools without guaranteeing they're going to fund public education. So if they can put those guarantees back in the bill, then it should be more funding for us. But until they do, you know, we have to stand against that. So if you have time, feel free to email your reps, your senators. I know I would appreciate it, sure the board would too. Just, you know, tell them, hey, we got to make sure we keep funding our public education, so.
And one of the things, if you do call and you want to mention, that's, that's going to be $75 million appropriated in tax credits for folks to apply and get money back for sending their kids to private schools. And you are eligible for that money if you make $166,000 a year or less.
Or a family of four.
So you can make your own judgment on whether someone who makes that much needs a tax credit from the state to send their children to private school. And I'll leave it right there.
They don't have the same accountability that public schools do.
Anyone else?
Thank you for going.
Senator Esslinger spoke, she did a good job. She's a former superintendent in public schools too, so she advocates for schooling, so. Sorry for her to come in.
It was a good day, besides the traffic.
Except for that hour.
Thank you all. It was. All right, next, we have the Consent Agenda. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and respond when appropriate by mail or telephone at a later date. In order to speak during public participation, a public comment form must be filled out and submitted to the Board President prior to the beginning of the meeting. Per Policy BDDH-1, public participation at board meetings, the following rules will apply to public comment portion of the meeting. One, the public comment period will not exceed 15 minutes. Two, no individual will be permitted to speak more than once during this period. Three, each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. Four, discussion will be limited to items from the posted agenda. Five, all speakers must provide their name and address prior to speaking. And six, if there is insufficient time for everyone to speak, the board will encourage participants to submit their questions in writing or utilize the process of putting an item on the agenda. I do not have any public comment part. Next on the agenda is the report of the superintendent.
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome back to our newly re-elected members. First on the superintendent's report is kindergarten enrollment numbers. I've structured this a little differently than in the past. We have an enrollment date. Believe it was at Bloomsdale first, no, St. Genevieve Elementary on March 2nd, and then Bloomsdale on March 23rd? Are you okay, Tyson? So I've grouped them by building, even though they may have occurred on different days. I thought it was important to keep the groupings together. So you can see, on the 2nd, at St. Genevieve Elementary, we screened 59. On the 23rd, for St. Genevieve Elementary, we screened 21, for a total of 80. They suspect one retention. And then there's a note down there for 16 students that may be in the wind in some form or fashion. For Bloomsdale Elementary, on March 2nd, they screened one. And on March 23rd, they screened 32. So that's a total of 33 with a suspected two retention. So if you look down at the bottom, the predicted enrollment for St. Genevieve Elementary is 99. And then for Bloomsdale Elementary. It's up at their St. Genevieve Elementary, the prior year. Last year, 81. Last year for Bloomsdale, it was 43. I think they've got some plans to make to make that number a little bit. We did go back and look at our first day of school numbers for last year. Not that that's indicative of how many students we have. September enrollment number is a little more accurate. In regard to the jail, 7. After having 44. St. Genevieve Elementary is 90, after having 81. So, strong numbers. Little bit down Bloomsdale, little bit up St. Genevieve Elementary, but I think it balances out overall. So any questions about kindergarten enrollment? Just a couple items of notes. The last day of school will officially be Thursday, May 23rd. We will have a half day that day. And then the next day, Friday, May 24th, will be our Certified Staff Work Day, Checkout Day. And then I think we have a couple more items on the next slide. Dr. Boyd, you want to speak to these two items? Another date of note, Friday, May 10th, is our Retirement Recognition Banquet. We're working hard on planning that. It will be at St. Genevieve Elk's Lodge at 6:00 PM. And then next on the agenda are the principals' reports.
First of all, good evening.
Good evening.
When I started putting this together, I realized how few school days we've had since the last board meeting because of spring break. So I put out a plea to the board today for some help. The first slide here just happened yesterday in the building. We had first and second grade ag in the classroom today. And 59th, we brought some of our first students over to present and teach our first grade and second grade students about concepts of farming. This is always a fun one, where they get to milk the cow. And then, you know, they could do some presentations. The second graders did get a corn demonstration. I did not get a picture of the ear of corn, but I did see it in the presentation. And then in early May, Hannah has arranged for them to do a mini fair off at the fairgrounds. And socialistic gives that, and making a deal with the tour, a mini fair. Fifth grade file day. I thought these were really fun when I was searching for the drive to find out what was going on. And I saw these happening. So what they did is they did research on the famous people. And then they created a presentation on them and they dressed up as that. We have Martin Luther King Jr., we have Donald Trump, we have Adolf Hitler, George Washington, Anne Frank, and then a few. And they. So I thought that would be a way to demonstrate their knowledge. They also set up a courthouse movement and voting experience for our fifth grade students. So the ladies at the courthouse were gracious enough to bring our kids down. They taught them about the voting process and how it worked. And then they held a mock election. You can see the. That was a good sticker. So that was a pretty fun process for the kids to get. Then we have our positive opportunity for all videos. Isley Miles, Abigail Strong, Gage Ballard, Yvonne Er. Peter Kingery. The whole fifth grade. Jackson Hook. William Bausch. Again. So we had quite a few positive officer referrals just in a short span of time that we've been back to school. And two or three of those students were new students. So it was good to see them already be. And then on our final slide. Mrs. Snitzler took our fourth grade students to the St. Louis Art Museum. And there they are posing on Art Hill. And this was a favorite display with the mummy at the art museum. And the way they did it this year is they went into two groups. Two of the classes went last Friday to our way this Friday. It gives them a more guided tour opportunity. So they really get more out of it if the tour guides can explain more rather than just kind of walking. Uh, looking ahead, we have our third, fourth, and fifth grade music programs tonight. It's actually our fourth grade music program, Over the Path. Um, we are into map testing. Our special education students have started. And next week, I believe, the first grade students start. And we also have some end of year testing. Kindergarten kickoff is April twenty-ninth. That's where our new kindergarten students get to come in and get to see their teacher and see the classroom. April thirtieth is our second semester power assembly. We invite you to come join and watch one of those if you haven't. Those are student-led and look pretty fun. Um, we have a lot of field trips. We have field day coming up. As I mentioned, the first and second grade mini fair and end of year festivities. So the next month and a half is going to be very fast and furious, so. Evening.
Good evening.
And I talked about we need to probably start combining ours. Some of our events are pretty similar. So we were down a little bit on our positive officer referrals for the month. But we had Katie Ayler, Kinsley Hook, and Cheyenne Lumpy. And then our staff of the month is our cook Julie. Um, she is always greeting. Do not read that for. That would be, she is always greeting me and others with a smile and hello in the breakfast lunch line. She asks about your day and then tells you to enjoy the day. She is so kind. A few things that were said about, uh, Mrs. Caleb Ader, Mr. Caleb Ader. She creates welcoming and safe classroom environment for students. She builds relationships with her, with all of her students. She helps other teachers. I love bouncing ideas off her and creating plans together. And she is a great friend and teacher, so we're happy to add both. Um, we have a few more students that met their reading goals. So they got to visit the book learning machine. And that's the script. Check it. Tap with some kindergarten students choosing their books. And then Ms. Rich took several students to a math competition at CMO. Um, on Saturday, April sixth, four of the students competed in a regional math competition. And they earned several ribbons. And I wrote them down so I wouldn't miss out on, they, they had a lot of ribbons. So Tristan Rapp, he's fourth grade. He won first place on the target round and third overall for fourth graders. Dander Braun, he won, he's also in fourth grade. He won third place on target round, fourth place on sprint round, and eighth place overall for fourth grade. Ben Plataff is a fifth grader and he won fifth on the target round, third on the sprint round, and third overall for fifth grade. Lucas Weber is a fifth grader and he won fifth on number sense, second on target round, first on the sprint round, and second overall for fifth grade. And Bloomsdale Elementary took first place overall for the elementary school category. So they will be heading for state. Mrs. Rich has been working with them for several months. So she was super excited about their progress and how far, how many made it. So this past weekend, our PTO sponsored the Me and My Dodgeball and dance. And we had, uh, several parents attend. The moms played dodgeball with the su- their sons and the daddies got to dance with their daughters at night. So it was a great turnout and our PTO is always so wonderful in their sponsoring of events. They, they go all out, so we're very, truly grateful for all of them. Again, we had Ag in the classroom. Mark was just today and I know Miss Otto has way more pictures than we, we had. I saw that she was there able to get some pictures of them. But the kids were excited to learn about the dairy farm and we're grateful that you allow, uh, them to come to our building. We appreciate that, we appreciate that. And then like she said, like, uh, Nanya said, spring break was, um, a big part of our month. So I asked our teachers to share, share some of what they did over spring break, share a picture. And I thought this is pretty fitting for us to be able to, you know, be happy that they got to spend time with their families and loved ones because we all are happy for them. So a few pictures to enjoy. They all had a wonderful time and came back all relaxed, rejuvenated, and re- ready to end the year. So our last slide, we do have the Betty's Color Splash and our PTO Spring Carnival that is this weekend. If you are open and available, feel free to come out and enjoy the day with us. It's always a good time. And we do a scholarship for, um, a student, so that's important as well. Um, yeah, so please come dance, we'd love that. Thank you.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
You guys get me this evening. Scott was at Perryville Track, well, at our track. Me at Perryville, I think getting blown away. Um, I heard it was very, very windy. Um, so middle school, I would love to say we don't have much, um, because we have those short weeks, but there was a lot packed in there. Um, we have a spirit group that lives and loves to make spirit wrestle weeks, which I know some parents question. Um, so we let them do it each round. So every new round, we seem to have new spirit weeks. So right before spring break, it was a springing into spring break. They look for any reason. Um, we had a spirit week and I thought it would be a flop, um, because a lot of times in spring at that point, our kids are kind of over some of that. And it came in and it came in hot and it was a good time. Um, you might've seen some pictures of us with our roshambo day. They, they built that up and I was like, nobody's playing roshambo. I've never played that much rock paper scissors in my life. And kids who had never walked up to me were like walking up. So they were truly shy. Quiet kids walk up. You know, half of the necklace were red. I mean, they were ready to fire. So that was a hit of a spirit day. Um, you can see some other ones here. There was some bad fashion. Um, I don't normally dress like that. And some teacher-student swap. Those are just always fun ones at middle school. And then over here, um, are my students in joint wings. And we talk about that. We have that once a quarter. That's a positive incentive, um, that just meets the whole title that our kids can learn that. Um, our wings numbers were up quarter one, quarter two. And all of a sudden, quarter three took a huge nosedive. Um, so I use that as a time to really challenge our kids. Like if your friends aren't sitting next to you, you'll go back and you'll let your friends know, you know, what they missed out on and what they can work toward. Um, a few of them actually said, this was really fun because it wasn't having any of us in here. There was more room. And I was like, no, no, we're not, we're not keeping the circ tight. Um, go back and talk to them. So we're hoping quarter four, um, we're back up. Because then our kids can get recognized if they're a frequent flyer, which means they get all four quarters wings. Um, they actually get in, put into a drawing at the end of the year. So, so that's something for them to work toward. I'm gonna backtrack, you don't have to flip back. But, um, we did have our middle school spring play. We flipped anyway, on, on Sunday. I think quite of you were able to, to make it. I was not. And, um, that always pains me a little bit because you get to see our kids that you don't expect just taking over that stage. Um, and they, um, put on a mad tea party. And I heard it was fabulous. Dr. Mercer had lots to tell me about when I got in on Monday. So, um, that's just always a neat event. And all of the props and themes that come together out of our design class are crazy impressive as well. So we can go forward. All right, um, this evolved out of last year. Out of nowhere, some of my teachers came and said, elementary gets to do field trips. Why don't we do field trips? And I was like, what, what do you mean? We do, we do group field trips. And so we started talking and started coming up with these ideas. And I said, what's your reasoning? Give me, give me a reason. What are we, you know, what is our plan here? And they said, we do field trips for groups, you know, for kids who can stay after school or for kids who make certain grades. Or for kids, you know, we have this very select group. And they're like, we wanna make sure that every single kid has the opportunities to get out of St. Genevieve County, um, and experience something. So if we do that for these groups, we need to be doing it for everybody. So there evolved, that evolved into grade level field trips. And then some crazy lady, um, known as Mrs. Huffman, said, let's do them all in the same day. And then nobody has to change plans and figure everything out if they only have a third of their class or half of their class. Um, so we do. We take all three grade levels to three different places. And the biggest thing that I wanna say out of this, I mean, you can tell our kids have a blast. The experience is worth it times a million. Um, but also just the amount of people that it takes to come together to make it happen. Like when I called the bus company last year and said, I have nine buses on the same day. And they're like, no. I was like, okay, let's try again. And they work with us and they figure it out. And now their drivers know it's coming and they're ready for it. And they just ask me like, when's the day? What are we planning for? Uh, and where are we going? So it is a little tricky. Like I heard you guys saying, you split your grade level to make it easier. People don't wanna take a hundred and forty kids at one time. So it is a little difficult to find spots. Um, but this year, our sixth grade went back to the zoo. That's what we did for sixth grade last year. And then we had to change plans for seven and eight. So seventh grade went to the science center and they all got to do an Omni Maps movie, um, on the art kit. And then eighth grade did the same museum. And that also allowed them some, um, independence because they, you know, got to go out in groups to check back in. And no one was left in St. Louis. So it was, it was a phenomenal day. Um, and it was a day right as we rolled into spring break. So it was also perfect timing for our teachers, for our kids. Um, and literally we got to come back. We all got to take a sigh of relief, celebrate what happened, and, and then go relax. So it was, it was perfect timing. Um, and then today I sent out our feedback form and I could see nothing. There has been zero, I could see that coming here too. We got this figured out. So I say thank you to anybody that helped with that, um, and those that allow that to happen. Our nurse's office was hopping that day. She has to have all of her bags come over for every grade level, for every bus, for every teacher. Um, so there's a lot, a lot that goes on. So it's a pretty awesome event that we hope to. Dragons on fire. I got to celebrate all these people with them. Um, I actually called a lot of them in yesterday. We have Lily Farlow, Mila Schennerbarger, um, Dawson Witte, Gabby Tannell, Kiana Brown, Ashlyn Wesner, Vivian Haynes, and Hiliaki. Um, if you saw my Facebook post for school, literally all of these were colors. That was, that was the theme of the positive officer referrals. Um, and it's just them stepping in, the nobodies asking. And that's a pretty cool thing as a, as a middle school student, you know, them stepping up and stepping in. Uh, so they are definitely to be celebrated. And our April spotlight is actually, I know who it is. Uh, but she left early today. I'll give you some hints. And we were not able to tell her who was the April spotlight. So we would like to do that first and take, take our fun candid photo of her. Um, we'll share that up in next week. Uh, if you'll look, we did start map testing. Our special ed department started last week. And then everybody else, well, eighth grade rolled in this week. Um, and are very thankful to have air conditioning today while they were doing that. Yesterday was a little swampy in the middle school. Um, and then we're just rolling on through more, we're into our other subject areas and then right into NOBA, so. And then, um, this is what's coming. So we are very quickly going to see that May twenty-third date. Like if you look at what's coming, um, we also, we do a lot, it feels like we do a lot of testing, but then we do a ton of celebrating, um, to kind of show. That's all. Thanks, guys.
Hi. Okay, so this is our autopsy coming. So that first picture on the left is something that they're working. Metal portion of the deck, but I'll let you talk about it. What is your turn? So I will pay. Okay, so the bottom is Lily Largent, she's holding a piece of dough. It's pasta though because at World Foods and the college class they're on their pasta portion. Um, on the top is in Mr. Rapp's classes in geographic, there's a boy that's making a, it's gonna end up being off the three D printer. It's a boat prototype. Basically, I got to do this, um, a few years ago in his, um, geographic class. He basically says, you can make whatever you want and we'll three D print it off. I just need to improve it. It's just too easy. So it's definitely, he gives you the range for it. You're fully prepared to do whatever you want. Just look up whatever you wanna do. It's super cool. Um, bottom on the right is my favorite thing on this cover spot. Um, Miss Baba has English or Spanish three and Spanish four in the same class. And so I got to do this last year, but Spanish three right now is working on a children's book completely in Spanish. And then the coolest part is that they ship it to Guatemala so that the children in Guatemala can read them because they don't have those resources. So last year, we shipped a handful, I think it was two boxes of children's books that got to go over there so that they could read them. That was the coolest thing. Um, so our Elton Rotary Student of the Month in Positive Officer Referrals. Tessa Hager was the Elton student of the month and Ada Meyer was Rotary Student of the Month. Positive Officer Referrals, Connor Dorincamp with Toronto, Dander Thompson, Harley Bowman twice, Laurie Parker twice, Harley Bosler, Jalen Timento, Mason Challenger, Alex O'Brien, Bella Watkins, Abby Merklin, Morgan Swin, Kennedy Bowen, Ethan Maloney, Jeremy Benzi Junior, Parker Warren, Cameron LaRose, and Owen Bowman. All things art. I had these spread out and I had to redo it because I just kept getting more and more cool things that are happening in our art department. Um, so on that bottom, the VFW Women's Auxiliary, they had a patriotic, um, competition. And four of our people got awards for that. And I think they won prizes for it too. Um, from left to right, that is Ally McBrury, Hannah Woodruff, Mallory Rottler, and Ruthie Dunn. Um, going to the middle, CMO had their annual high school art show. Two of our people, we had more people placed, but there were so many that I only chose, obviously we didn't have space. I chose the people that got first. Um, Mallory Rottler, she put in her school that she had made at the beginning of the year. We had talked about that maybe the first month. Um, she had entered that and she got first place, not a shocker. Um, LA Wileman Dear, she had two that place. Um, her Santa Baby shoe got first place. And then she had a peacock that doubled as a bowl that got third place. Um, I think two or three other people placed, but these were the people that got first. Um, on the top is just what normally happens in Mrs. Bowman's art class that is really very ceramic. And it doesn't look like a raspberry yet, but after she paints it and fires it, it'll be a raspberry. On the bottom, today was Rakuget, Raku Day. I'm pretty sure you guys know a lot about that. It is definitely one of the coolest, most unique things that our school does, especially in art. Um, it's just an old, um, technique for firing. Um, so that happened today. They had a blast. Every year they get completely burnt. Everybody comes in and they're lobster red, but it's always the coolest thing. Okay, so other stuff. We had our Dan Clark banquet Wednesday and there was a lot of things that went on. I saw a lot of you guys there, so thanks guys for showing up. But, um, started off April year, started off the entire event and then it went straight to, I think, patch overall. Patched overall, um, Mr. Tyson Chapman came in and just introduced what patch overall is and what it's about. And then handed it over to Penny Ainge, our senior class president. Uh, she probably went to California on her trip and she dealt with cancer cells and just talked about the entire experience and how she got the opportunity again, she would not pass it up. She highly recommends and how just amazing and scary it was. Um, after Penny had spoken, she passed over to Charlie Corbett. Charlie got awarded to go this year. And so he was talking about what his plan is, the things he had to prepare for and everything. And so just, um, from the audience perspective, it was really cool to see both completely different perspectives. Penny being a girl going into the, um, science part of STEM, um, have already experienced the entire thing. And then from Charlie, a boy going into the construction opposite side of STEM, um, and preparing for it. So they both were just trying to, um, encourage the sophomore upcoming in your class to really go for it. So I think after that, Mrs. Dallas's daughter spoke. And she had talked to us about the hardships and anxiety she had gone through in high school and how to not be afraid to speak up. She wished she would've spoke up and got help sooner. And that once she did, she became so successful and got to do everything she wanted to do after high school. It was definitely very encouraging for people who might be in that same boat. Kind of realize they aren't alone and that they should seek help if they need help. Uh, afterwards, Mr. Vios got awarded for the Millikens. I have to find this because I said it wrong earlier. The Millikens Teacher of Tomorrow Award. The Millikens Teacher of Tomorrow Award from CMO, two representatives came. And if I'm not mistaken, they should pin the entire state of Missouri. And Mr. Vios as a first year teacher got it. He is just such an amazing person and even outside of the classroom, but he's absolutely deserved that award. So he spoke a little bit on that. It was just a big night for him. Uh, so after that, our choir, there's some boys from choir that sang to us as we started getting up and getting our food. But the night overall was amazing. It was catered by eleven eleven catering and then Vinnie's High Desserts. So the entire night was awesome. Uh, over on the right gave Willett's sign Friday, April twelfth for McKendry University. And I think it was the rest day. So. Yep. Um, Polar Plunge, that was at the end of March. A lot of you guys were there too. So you got to see how cold it was. I know that's the whole point, but oh my gosh, it was so cold. Um, I threw some cute pictures up there. Sasa was the dog. I think that was Miss Autumn's dog. That was Autumn's dog? Miss Autumn? As you can see, Sasa loved the dog. Um, I'm classicing Deanna with her buddy, Mr. Mueller. I think that was after he plunged. You can see on the bottom that he plunged with Mr. Roth. I'll do it if you do it, but I have to do it if you do it. So, um, and then on the right there is the picture of the balloon station that Miss Choir and Abby and Jaycee set up and just handed out cute little fun balloon hats. Um, on the very right, only Vinnie is pictured, but Vinnie, uh, Baga and Gavin Amlog and Mr. Rapp both worked on the new city hall podium. Uh, Mr. Boga, I think you asked them to help with that. Uh, they got it finished. It looks great. And I think that they're working on our new school one. So that one obviously turned out great. I'm sure this next one will turn out even better. Um, on to spring sports and stats. I surprised to see the track stat and I looked everywhere at so many people, but I couldn't figure out their whole season. But I talked to a lot of the athletes individually and looking on Facebook and everything. And there are a lot of placers and I think a lot more male placers in there were last year. So rolling into state, I think a lot of boys are going to go, a lot more boys than last year. Uh, ball, they've had ninety so far, a lot of challenging component, opponents. Um, and I think their losses are more than their wins right now. Um, going on to baseball, they are currently, they play tonight at home versus Farmington. So I don't know whether they won or lost. Oh, just kidding. It got rained out. Uh, they're currently seven and six. Uh, so real close, but they're going to their games. Their games are always so nail biting, but it always turns out good. Okay, moving on. Softball is eleven and seven right now. We were going to play with County tonight, but it got rained out too. So we'll play them tomorrow. We beat them once. I'm not going to jinx it. Okay, clubs and classes. Mathletes, mathletes had a competition where twenty-four out of twenty-five people placed. And that was so, so, so exciting for them. They were so excited when they found out. I was in the room when they all found out and it was just a big moment for them all. Um, Charlie Corbett was the only one who placed first. He placed first in eleventh grade word problems. There were six others who placed second individually. And then two teams, teams placed second overall. And I think the rest were third, but overall that's, I think the best we've ever done. So they're really excited for their next competition. Um, going on to band, there were two gold rankings. One was Damian Wheeler on the euphonium. And Salon Droth on the clarinet. Salon Droth on the clarinet. So those were two of our gold rankings. And then twenty-six people in total earned high rankings during the band ensemble and solo event. So that is also really, really exciting because I think maybe thirty people went and twenty-six of them placed. Um, media production on the TVs on that top, that's a picture of them working on graphics. If you've gone through their school or been to any of our, uh, sports events, you'll see that we have the projector, projection boards around. And they do a really, really good job and just don't get bragged about enough for the things that they do. Um, walking through the halls, they just work every day. Um, make sure they cycle through new ones every day. Um, they're always super helpful. They'll talk about the upcoming events coming up, like when, like Unified is this week. They'll advertise for Unified. They'll advertise for Polar Plunge when it comes up. But they also brag about seniors, senior nights coming up. Um, they'll go through their baby pictures, they'll go through their different, um, sports banners. Um, just a whole lot of information. Right now they're putting a lot of really funny things to keep you drawn to those boards. So they just work really hard every day and just don't get enough recognition for what they do. Um, at FBLA State, they left yesterday and are coming back today. I'm not sure what their placings are yet, but they went to Springfield. And as you can see, seven people went. Um, Planet Power, Planet Power is another club that doesn't get talked about very often, but they are behind the scenes doing amazing things. Right now they're about to sell, um, these reusable bags and they're Saint Genified over there with. So they're going to start selling those, but I think other things they do are make, um, their own kinds of paper. And they reuse recyclings to make different things. Uh, but this is one of the big things that they're about to do for fundraising. We have two teacher of the months, one's teacher, one's faculty. Um, for our teacher was Mr. Schwent. The student said, congratulations to SGHS April Faculty Member of the Month, Mr. Cody Schwent. Mr. Schwent was nominated by students at SGHS and was chosen based on those nominations by the Principal Advisory Group. A student, a student at SGHS had the following to say about Mr. Schwent. He always is there for students. He wants to be there and he wants to be there for his kiddos. He cares for our wellbeing and mental, mental health and does not mind taking the time out of his day to give full attention and support to those who need it. I personally am forever grateful for him. His advice helps open your eyes a little bit more and shows different perspectives of the situation and try to help. He never fails to put a smile on my face and makes students feel welcomed in his class and in the world. I love his determination and his dedication for the things he loves. His class is by far my favorite class to be in and I absolutely do not like his subject. The teacher makes it worth it and has helped me through numerous times, working through problems and making it safe to ask questions. Or if you don't know and, or understand something, he is quick to help and he wants to help. That is what I love about him. Thank you for your constant service to the students at SGHS. Cody Schwent. Our staff member of the month is Mrs. Dallas. Uh, a student at SGHS had the following to say about Ms. Dallas. This staff member goes above and beyond for everybody and her every word and action is out of love. It is rare to meet a person who makes it so evident that they're care, that they care and are there for anyone no matter what. Throughout my time in knowing this staff member, she has with no doubt been an impact on my life. Many people can verify that this person is someone who you can count on, someone who will do everything in their power to better the lives of those around them and someone who is an angel in disguise. Thank you for your consistent service to the students at SGHS. And that's all I got.
One quick question, Adriana, is this your last one?
It's my last.
Well, thank you.
We will miss you.
We'll miss you.
Got to hand off to somebody?
Next on the superintendent's report is the safety reports and you will see some fire drills. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is unfinished business and the first item is the instructional program presentation, middle school industrial arts. Mr. Thompson.
She got all of her peppiness from me. All right, so this is for middle school industrial tech. It's, uh, sixth grade through eighth grade. I teach two sections of it. It's tech one, tech two. Uh, we can talk about facilities first. It's awesome that, uh, Mr. Rapp and I get to work with such great classrooms and we get all these nice different tools and technologies to use. So we get to walk back and forth between three different rooms, actually his computer portion of the room and then the wood shop over there. And then I have the wooden metal working shop over mine. That's just a picture of some of the drill press and man saws we have in there, the back where we have lumber stored, part of our metal working. Uh, our new welding stations, we cut down so they're a little more visible and more people can view whenever they're welding. They're on the left. We've had the plasma cutter probably for seven, eight years now. And we're able to do all kinds of different projects with those from, if I get some advanced middle school kids, they get to work on them towards the end of the year, but it's mainly for high school and then, uh, any projects that people send our way. Uh, there's Mr. Rapp's new wood shop there that he's reorganized since he's taken over. Uh, they did a real good job there, putting in new work benches on the left, moving some machines around. Machine on the right's the CNC router that we do get to use in our tech two middle school class and then all throughout high school. And then again, whenever, uh, we have projects that come in from people. I know part of the podium was made on that. Uh, this is a computer portion of his room where he stores the different machines that probably shouldn't get a lot of dust in them. So he's got 3D printers. I think we have five of them in there. Sometimes all five are working, some of four are working. He has some great kids, some high school kids that are a lot smarter on those than us and they can go in there and they can fix those. Gavin Gack's amazing on it. He, he blows it out of the water anytime something breaks. I'm like, Gavin, fix that. And then the laser engraver, uh, we're actually getting a bigger one. That's the smaller one we've had for a while, but we get to use that in tech one and middle school, tech two, and then all the way through high school also with all of our different projects we make there. Uh, so what is industrial tech one? Sixth through eighth grade, students can take it. I've been here for fourteen years, so it's changed names. It's changed how we've done it for a while. For the longest time it was only sixth graders that could take it, but over time we've had it because there's been seventh and eighth graders that wanted to take it too for a real long time. So we changed that up, I don't know, probably three or four years ago. There's no prerequisites for it. Uh, we start off the year with learning how to read a ruler, keep it simple, eighth scale ruler. They need to know how to do that for anything they do in the rest of their life. And then we get into more of, uh, engineering portion of it, not just the traditional wood or metal shop that we do. And a lot of that, uh, around group work and partner work, we do architectural and civil engineering. We make newspaper towers. They get a problem. They have to figure out how to make the tallest tower with however much material they get. And it has to hold a golf ball on it. And then the other one that I've started up a few years ago is this spaghetti bridge. And that kind of gets them ready for when they do go into high school and takes, take the engineering classes with Mr. Rapp, where they get to make the wooden bosal, or the bosal wood bridges, where they get to compete at CMO on those and make some money. The kids really like making money when they do stuff at school. But up here I have a few of the projects. That's the first one. It's our spaghetti bridge. Of course I had to bring a broken one because they all do have to break. It's us. What we do is they get a pound of spaghetti, ten little glue sticks. They have to figure out different types of engineering structures and shapes that'll work best to hold ball bearings that we put in. And I think this year we had probably one of the heaviest that held, that held twenty-one pounds. So kids are really like doing that. They incorporate all kinds of just engineering ideas. They work together on it, trying to figure out how to do it. And it's something that I think is going to stick around for a while that they really like doing. Then we get into traditional woodworking. What anybody ever hears industrial tech or shop, they always think, oh, it's woodworking and metalworking. That's it. So we do get to do that. It is fun. Uh, they get to learn about how to use all hand tools. In this tech one class, we get to do a little machine work, uh, planer and stationary sander. We get to use those and then hand sanders. That's about where I cut it off with, because it's mainly sixth graders in there. I don't think they're ready to get into some of the bigger machines yet. Uh, we do make wooden coasters. I've got a few of those out here. Seven of five. And they all have to come up with all the different types of wood that we have in there, get them all together. They have to make a base for one. And then the four others have to be perfectly square with each other, figure out how to square that up to get the exact size that I asked for them to do. And then they have dowel rods that stick out of these, these dowel rods broke off. And then it usually just sits on that. Some of you may have seen these before, some of you may have them in your offices or at homes, anywhere like that. And you can see that we did get to use the laser engraver on that. They get to come up with whatever design they want, as long as it's school appropriate. And they can show me it and go from there. Uh, when we first started that, I only started with like six designs because I wasn't that great with the laser engraver yet. But over the years, they've taught me and I've taught myself. And now it's pretty much, if they send me something, we can figure out a way to do it. And then we finish up with the metal working portion. It's just plain, pretty easy sheet metal work. They all get a pattern they have. Everybody's the same. They get to make a dustpan. This is one of the older dustpan and then incorporate some of the woodworking to it. I'm sure a lot of you have seen these dustpans around for a long time. It's been a project that's in a lot of different schools and it works out great to get those kids just interested and started off with metalworking. Uh, we don't do the wooden handle anymore. We do a metal handle. And we've gotten rid of using our spot welder and I actually get the sixth graders on with MIG welders now. They get to learn how to tack weld up with MIG welders and go from there. It's a little more advanced than what they've done in the past. And it's a pretty fun project for them and the parents like it a lot, usually when they take it home and they can use it there. So that's a tech one. That's all we have a project wise there. How about tech two? Again, sixth or eighth graders can take it. I try and tell the sixth graders if they take it first semester, their first year, hold off for a little bit. Don't take tech two in the spring. You won't be able to take anymore after that. We used to have a tech three, but right now with just me and Mr. Rapp there, it's kind of hard to get any more, uh, courses in there. But they do have to pass industrial tech one before they can take tech two. Uh, we've never had the issue where no one has not passed and not been able to get into tech two. If they ever come across that, I guess Mr. Mercer, Ms. Huffman and I will figure something out there and see what we can do there. Again, we start off the year with doing measuring tools. They use all their different type measuring tools. We bump it up to a sixteenth scale instead of just an eighth scale. And that's just growing on what they learned from tech one and then getting them ready for high school or wherever they want to go after that. We get into board drafting, so we get away from the engineering there. We get into traditional board drafting where they have to learn about 3D shapes, breaking them up into single view, multi-view and 3D. Using the drafting tools to the rulers, the T-squares, the triangles, figure out angles and create all those on there. After we get done with that and we get into the CAD part, what's awesome about all of them having their own computers, they have a free program out there called Tinkercad, where it's a 3D design program. They're able to take all those designs we've made on board drafting and then they create them in the Tinkercad version. They have to use their plans that they made, that we call them, on the board drafting. So that shows them that you have to make sure you have every little detail on there. Because if you don't, then it's going to be a little bit harder when you get into doing Tinkercad. But once they get on there, then they get to do the 3D designs on that. And with that, we also create an architecture. I give them the choice of creating some sort of building. It doesn't have to be a house. It doesn't have to be an office building. It could be a barn, a shed. It could be, I don't know, anything they can think of, just something architecture wise. And they go off that and create it. We turn it in so you can see through it. They have to have five rooms. They have to have doorways. They have to have multiple levels. So they get in a little bit of architecture work there in middle school, which is pretty nice to get them thinking about taking maybe an architecture class in high school. And then we do get to do the 3D printers with those. Some of the things they design up on Tinkercad, they get to print off. So a lot of times we do like one or two basic shapes that they all have to just look at. They all have to measure it and then they have to create it and print it off themselves and compare it to the one that we have in the class already. So they have to figure out all these measurements. And this is a real basic one. Sometimes they have one with angles, holes. They got to figure out the diameter, if the hole goes all the way through, how to figure all that out. And then they're fun. What they can do is they get to make keychains. I know Mr. Roth has the 3D printers in his STEM class and they're doing something similar with 3D, uh, with keychains. So we're kind of working back and forth with that. And the kids love making these keychains, putting them on their lanyards or their backpacks. Uh, that's pretty much the drafting portion of it and the computer drafting portion of it. Then we get back into woodworking. And both, uh, myself and Mr. Rapp's class, we have all those different machines in there that is awesome that we have. Like I said, the only machine we don't let them use, or I don't let them use is a table saw. I'm not ready for a middle schooler to use a table saw anytime I'm here yet. But you can use a bandsaw, all the drill press, the planers again, the joiner, uh, stationary sander, the CNC router. They get to go over there and use that. It's pretty nice. The woodworking projects we give them, the first one are clocks. Okay, so real basic clocks. Again, we get to incorporate the laser engraver in that. We get to incorporate the CNC router, having to figure out how deep to make the clockwork slow and go from there. With the CNC router, it's pretty easy to use. We have a set of plans. I do go over it once, but then after that they have to partner up and they have to figure out, brainstorm and work through everything, figure out how to get it set up and get it set up right. Then I go over and check it before they actually hit the go button on it. So it's a pretty nice thing that they get to try out, that they'll probably get to do a lot more in high school. Uh, metalworking, we used to always just do metal parts bin, but I've been trying to do a few other. Uh, metalworking, we used to always just do a metal parts bin, but I've been trying to do a few other projects. Uh, in the past, when Coach White was here, we had this broke up and Coach Yet, we had this broke up where in tech one or in tech two. They made a parts bin that went into a toolbox that they make at high school. Tech three, they made a tool tray. That's in the toolbox also that they make in high school, but right now they don't, we don't have tech three offered. But I do have the option where this is what their first project is. And if I get some of those advanced kids that are in there that get done early. Then I give them the option if they want to make this for, uh, for high school. Or even my high school kids, if they get done with their toolbox early and they didn't have a chance to take this or make this in middle school, then they can make this tool tray also. So all these, all three of these projects go together between middle school and high school. The good thing I like about the parts bin and I don't go straight to that is I give them the dimensions and everything for the actual bin. And they get that. It's more, a little more in-depth with sheet metalwork. It's not just pattern like they did in tech one. But then after that, not all these, you know, middle school kids, it doesn't turn out exactly how you want it to turn out. But then they have to figure out how to make a customized lid. Okay. So it's not just me telling them, this is the exact size you need to make. They have to go in and figure out how to make the lid that's going to fit on their parts bin and it'll fit into their toolbox up there. Reason why most of them take tech two is CO2 race cars. We go with woodworking. They love designing up their race cars, their CO2 cars, making it out of pine. And then at the end of the semester, usually around finals week, we get to race them. They get to race each other and, uh, go from there. We have thought about, I've wanted to try it once or twice, maybe doing it on the 3D printers and see how that works. Uh, if we are short on time, I want to do that. But usually if we have a lot more time drawn out. Can get to at least a little bit of metalwork, then I still want them to do a little bit more woodworking because they like doing it with the wood. But I'd like to try doing it on 3D printers once and just see how that goes. And then we finish up with, uh, they're trying to figure out industrial careers. I give them a huge list of different jobs that they can do or they can look into for industrial wise. Just get them thinking outside the box for maybe their future on different careers that they could do. And options for college or trade school and how to go about that. Once then we do that a lot more in high school too. And that is industrial tech two. Uh, other things we'd like to see them get out of it, like to gain understanding of just the industrial world around them. It's not just something where you come in and you look at what this is and this is what you're doing. No, I want you to come into a room and think about why is this building built the way it is. Okay. How can you improve a vehicle or mechanism to make it better for the future? And make it more productive. Is there something, uh, better material? We learned that in tech one where we have to think about why they used uh, the concrete blocks or why they use plastic for something. Why didn't they use something else? They have to think about the material around them, why it's better for them. And like I said, anything in middle school industrial tech, did that interest them at all to take anything in high school? That goes with industrial tech or go to Perryville to VOTech because that's a great program down there that they're running. And those, uh, high school kids, a lot of them need to go down there and check that out because they do awesome things down there. And then there's finally is there a career out there that they really like? Is there something that sparked in middle school that, hey, this is something I want to do down the road to help people out? Okay. And then I've got pictures of students that worked. We got Nolan over there designing up his coasters. Looks like off in the distance in the middle one, we got some paper bridges being made. Got guys working together there on the sliding miter saw. Cutting up their boards so they can make, glue them together to make their clocks on the right. Oh, this is an old picture of Justin Schwent when he was in middle school. He did a pretty good job. He was pretty happy with his CO2 party. He's actually a senior this year. One of my, he's one of my cad teachers. He comes in and works in my class with some of my guys. And I was going through that and he goes, find a picture of me. Then you got another one of a couple juniors there. Uh, you got Schweiger and then Wyatt there when they were designing and testing out their, uh, spaghetti bridge back. When they were in sixth or seventh grade. So just a couple throwback pictures there. Uh, a few thoughts from the students. When I talk to them, ask them what they thought about industrial tech, what they like. Josh said my favorite thing is classes with Tinkercad and making houses. So that's one thing I really like about this class. You may not be that great with working with your hands, but there's other things you can do too. The Tinkercad stuff on the computer, some people really like that. Some people like working with the woods and with the metals. So it's something that everybody can get into there. Uh, the creativity you can put or do anything on your projects with Easton said. Uh, that we get to woodwork and use all the different tools from Carter Jokers. I just got to meet Carter this year, this semester. I really like him a lot. I think he's going to be real fun to have in industrial tech down the road. Uh, you always, you're always doing something and will never be bored, Chase Gack. This one was really cool. I like that Wyatt said, working with Mr. Thompson, the tools along with people in class, which has brought me closer to my dad. Working with tools also. So I really liked that he put that in there. Uh, Emma, I like that we get to experience making coasters in the process of it. It makes fun. To make it fun, make things in classes. I did put Emma on there and I think she might be the only girl I put on there. We do have girls in industrial tech. We do. There's a lot of times, I think my first semester tech, uh, two class had more girls in it than boys, which happens every now and then. And then this tech two class I have this semester has zero girls in it. So it's just how the luck of the draw, I guess. And then Barrett said, I like the fact that I get to build and make stuff on my own. And that I get to use the tools and use the machines. Kate Mueller, I like woodworking and working with tools in my shop so that I took this class so I can learn how to make cooler designs and better projects in my shop. And Mason, I like being able to make projects or objects using tools. I've never used before and learning how to use those tools. Mason's a quiet guy for me a lot of times, but he has opened up quite a bit. He does enjoy that class. And then Connor. I like that we get to do woodworking and 3D print and use all the machines. So they get to tech two. They're really excited to use more machines than what they saw in tech one. And then I also, I wanted to finish with seeing if there's anything you guys can think of that you'd like us to incorporate into industrial tech. We're always willing to open up to that. So if you guys ever think of anything, send us some, uh, ideas. If we have time, we'll try and get in.
You opened the door.
All good? We got a lot of nails and boards we can just put out there, stick it up and then no one will pull in there. There's a lot of people there that night. It's important. Alrighty.
You did a fine job following. All right. Next on the agenda, we have the Prop SG update. So now you have to follow all those. I'm sorry. I wanted to go to something more exciting. Next we have summer school.
Can't get any more exciting. Um, summer school dates have been established. And so I'm learning all the kids again for that. Um, our schedule is first semester, we're going to start May twenty-eighth and we run to June thirteenth. And then second semester, again, we run from June fourteenth to July third. So we're going to go back to like for the most part, a five day week. Last year we tried to like be off on Fridays, but with this schedule, it's condensed a little bit more so. Yes, that was my first year for it. Several kids involved and, um,
So if you did personal finance, you have to do two semesters or you pick one semester?
And Dr. Boy, uh, like can any grade level student take it? Like even an incoming freshman or sophomore? Okay.
We do allow freshmen that are going into their sophomore year to take it during summer school.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you, sir. All right. Now we have the Prop SG update.
Wait, now we have to make a motion to approve the summer school schedule.
I'm going to lose my job. I have a motion of second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. I hesitate to say. Now we have the Prop SG updates.
Um, for St. Genevieve Middle School, we had, uh, a punch list last week. Uh, you can see some pictures on the slides. Uh, we were able to go up this evening with Board of Education, take a tour of all three floors. Uh, it's coming along nicely. We have some uh, finishing work going on on the upstairs transition from the old building to the new building. Um, but other than that, it is pretty much wrapped up other than Dr. Mercer and Mrs. Huffman getting out their allen wrenches and putting some furniture together. Yes.
Did it come from Ikea?
Send them up.
Speaking of the elevator, I was in touch with Matt Pig today, our onsite construction manager. And, uh, he indicated that the inspection date is May twenty-first currently. Um, they're hoping to move that up at some point. So originally this was scheduled to be done at the end of May. So we're on track for that. We can get that, that inspection date moved up a little bit, we'll be a little bit ahead of it. So uh, came along nicely. It turned out great. Uh, colors are fantastic. There were some critiquing of the colors in there. There was a little critiquing of the colors. I'm not going to say who. Yes, I am. And going into it, I think, uh, they knew that that was going to be the, the critical piece on when they could get on the schedule, which I think they're, they kind of work at their own pace.
Middle school parking lot open again?
Middle school parking lot is open.
It was up yesterday and the high, the elementary was not empty, but there were spots. I couldn't believe it.
We're going to have to work on getting those middle school teachers. Um, early childhood, we held a bid opening for bid package four, which contained various scopes of work, including concrete, asphalt, pavement and site utilities. Uh, work continues on the early childhood building. Uh, my wife and I were able to go out there Sunday. Uh, and park and take a little sneaky walk around. Um, and looking from sixty-one over on that hill in the distance, it looks impressive. But once you're standing on the concrete pad with the metal studs around you, you realize how impressive it is. It's, it's going to be a very nice facility. Uh, it's coming along nicely. Uh, they're continuing to work on it. So that's the update on early childhood. Uh, St. Genevieve Elementary, uh, plans are nearing completion. We made some decisions regarding, uh, the gym floor, access to the old gym within the building and the office layout. Uh, there were just, uh, some little quirky items, uh, in the, the plans. We were worried about a long ramp, ADA accessible ramp, leading into, uh, the current gymnasium. And so the ramp would really, they placed it in between the new gymnasium and the current gymnasium on the inside. Leading up to the door right now, I think we're Dragon's Den's picked up. Is that right? After school? I've learned that you have to not complain about everything all at once with architects. So that never came up. Uh, recently it did come up and we talked about different options. So one of the options was putting a ramp inside the current gymnasium and wrapping it around in there somewhere. Uh, so it would be going in like that little hallway where the nurse is and taking a right, having a ramp go down into the gymnasium. Give, uh, students on wheelchairs or crutches access that. Uh, we looked at several different versions of that and then they called me one day and said, what about, uh, what used to be called the carpeted hallway? Uh, the carpeted hallway butts up to that other side of the, of the gymnasium and is on the same level. So we could cut a hole in the end of the gymnasium wall and already have access with a ramp and not have to do a ramp. So it looks like that's going to work out. I ran it by Mrs. Gack, uh, the other day. She seemed to like that idea. So they're running with that currently. Uh, updated plans. Uh, so we're still working on those. I thought when we were taking a tour earlier today of middle school project, it might be a good idea to have, uh, our construction managers mark the locations of our elementary building out in the parking lot, all the corners and maybe walk out there next month. Um, depending whether of course, and take a look at where that's going to be because it's uh, first take is a little shocking on where that's going to be. Uh, it's going to be a gymnasium. So it's going to be big. So I think getting our eyes on that before it starts being built and answering questions and being able, uh, to address concerns. Going in is going to be important. So any questions about Prop SG?
When is the tentative start date for the elementary?
As soon as the kids are released, uh, we're hopeful that we can start on this parking lot out front in this grassy area right down from maintenance. Get that started and then I know Matt Pig is going to want to take over the entire parking lot. And we're going to argue about how many parking places he can take up with the fence. And all of the trailers and materials. Uh, so that's going to be a work in progress. That's going to be first on the agenda. They hope to get started right away.
And the plan is to remove that hillside and make a chinning wall, create spaces there.
Um, not yet. We are going to, that plan got put on hold because we didn't know the extent of where the building was going to be exactly. And we didn't want to do work that we're going to have to tear up.
Yeah.
Um, so that's still kind of on the back burner.
Okay.
Uh, we're in need of some additional spots, but that's going to be more of a follow-up after construction is done.
So what work has to be done here is alluding to.
So right out here, if you think about pulling into the middle school parking lot, maintenance is on your right. If you look to your left, there's a grassy area.
Yeah.
We worked with Bowman, uh, excavating, uh, and paving to identify maybe a sixteen spot little lot out there that we could put in similar to what we have over at Board Office, a little bigger. Uh, we can squeeze sixteen spots into there. And our thought was after construction is done, that could become visitor. And so now, you know, maybe we could designate that when subs come in. Well, then we have student teachers driving from CML or it could be used for a variety of things, but at a minimum, maybe identifying some visitor parking because right now when visitors It could be used for a variety of things, but at a minimum, maybe identifying some visitor parking, because right now when visitors show up, they usually end up just parking down at the bottom steps, walkman steps.
So would the entrance be in the middle school or in the elementary parking lot?
It would come off of the high school parking lot, so you would pull in the high school parking lot as normal and it would just be a little curve.
Okay. Uh, any update on the athletic facility? Other than?
Other than what we've talked about, um, budgets have, have come in where we've expected them, uh, barring any additional costs out of the early childhood center. And, um, some significant hurdles with St. Genevieve Elementary, it should be on pace before we talk about.
In our bids with the early childhood come in, are they all, is everything in now?
So we should be all done, uh, with all the bid packages. There are some alternates. We've got Maple Drive to think of with that water main. Um, I called Happy City and we planned to go to a meeting and present, um, they approved last time for us to seek out some bids and to see what those costs were going to be and address that because that was on their long-term, long-range plan. Um, and we attended a prior meeting to talk about that. They said, yeah, go get some bids, bring it back to us. Let's look at it. We'll see if we can rearrange some things to maybe move that up in the schedule.
That's the extension from nine to Virginia into that.
And I'm not sure exactly where they were able to hook into the, where the four-inch line became a six-inch down.
Yeah.
Taylor Engineering knows exactly where that, that we have all of the lengths and what, what that's cost. Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
All right, we'll move on to new business and the first item under new business is the school play extra duty stipend adjustment.
So we have several, uh, extra duty stipend, uh, adjustment requests. Um, the first one is school play. I think, uh, Caitlin has been doing, uh, a significant amount of work and originally Dr. Boyd, correct me if I'm wrong, this was two stipends?
Yeah.
Uh, and she's really taken on one and a half, if not both. Uh, and I think she's partnered with Michelle Jokers, um, and they're collaborating a bit too. So Dr. Boyd, uh, received some information from Caitlin and her, her request to examine that. Uh, he did, and I think she provided him with some, some time logs and some work logs on what she was doing. Uh, he called me and we discussed it and we thought, uh, it was appropriate to suggest, uh, from her current six percent, uh, raising that to a nine percent, that that was an appropriate adjustment.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and next is the cheer head coach position.
Uh, again, Dr. Boyd, you might have to remind me here. Was it two positions? Was it extra time?
It's been, it's been, uh, head and assistant. Ball and head assistant.
Right. Um, so we were looking at how this compares, uh, to the time spent on the other extra duty stipends. Um, not only the workload, but supervision load, uh, and it seemed to make sense, uh, to align this with some other, uh, consistent time, uh, comparisons. Um, so, uh, the motion here is, or the recommendation here is to raise, um, the head cheer coach extra duty stipend from five to fourteen percent.
I'll make a motion to approve the increase of the head cheer coach extra duty stipend for the high school from five percent to fourteen percent as presented.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, um, is the head, uh, girls golf head coach.
So the next two are gonna be very similar, um, going from eight percent to fourteen percent. Um, I was golf coach in the past at one time and it has evolved and I think back when I was doing it, coaches still went out and actually played with the kids, uh, during, uh, practice and went out and actually did something else rather than coaching because you couldn't. You could only coach at certain times. That's been banned, I think, for several years now. Um, it has evolved. Our coaches who do it now actually go out on the course or with the kids, really chasing the kids down all over nine or eighteen holes, wherever they are, trying to coach when they can. Um, so this position has evolved, uh, our program has evolved. We've got a lot more participation. So this is, uh, this aligns with the other, uh, extra duty stipends with the top.
I just have one question. So we have two boys splitting currently?
Correct.
Um, so my, I guess my question is, is this, and to me, either way, um, cool with either, but is this for current school year or the next school year? How are we splitting the fourteen percent?
So it would be for the next school year.
Okay.
Um, and if we ever run into a situation where we get approached or we approach as a faculty members, uh, maybe we could split it. Stipend issues split up.
Yeah, okay.
With both boys and girls having JV squads now, is it in the future, is it looking at it to be able to give a stipend to an assistant?
I think it's always on the table. I think it depends on how big it is. Your tournaments, you can only take five kids to a tournament and then your matches are your ones where you can take. So if you have, and I'm speaking from experience here, you know, if you have twelve, fourteen kids, you could take them all to a match, but only six can compete. Um, so there, there are some limits, uh, based on the rules of boys and girls golf that might not. Now I think it depends on the number of tournaments that you're going to also and how they overlap, because right now I think we have a JV and a varsity tournament that overlap that we have to actually reach out to somebody to supervise one of them when the head coach is going somewhere else.
I know sometimes like if there's a match or tournament, you know, the coach is putting him in the JV, he doesn't even practice. Like they're just.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the increase of the girls head coach, head golf coach extra duty stipend from eight percent to fourteen percent as presented.
The motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have the boys.
I'll make a motion to approve the increase of the boys head golf coach extra duty stipend from eight percent to fourteen percent as presented.
The motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have the addition of a librarian position.
So, uh, with the retirement of Jessica Udi, there was an opportunity to look at the library structure, uh, and see if there was a way to, uh, change it and prove it for students, make it more equitable. So I talked to building administration, mainly Kelly, because, uh, right now the, the structure, and in the past, the structure has been, we have one librarian, one elementary librarian that flip flops. And I think we've tried several different timeframes. It's been two weeks, it's been four weeks. Where Jessica would spend a certain amount of time in town, Sarah would spend a certain amount of time at Bloomsdale. Um, so with Jessica retiring, it, it was time to look at that again, so I talked to Ms. Heverly and said, you know, if, if this is an option, would you be interested? And she said, I think that would be an equitable thing to do, uh, to have an actual librarian at Bloomsdale and actual. Um, so, uh, anytime you change anything, you'd have to think about the impacts of that. So, um, we've talked to all the parties involved. We're trying to look at scenarios where we can minimize the negative impact on prank staff and that matter of fact. We've talked about several scenarios. We don't have anything, as the dominoes fall with parapositions and title one positions, um, until this decision is made, the rest of the students can't. So this is the first step. So my recommendation would be to add a librarian.
She's definitely. Some boys got there. She was, these kids got done with reading their books, uh, different books and stuff, and they all said she would read. She was so into that reading. And then, I'm gonna do that, that was amazing, but she had them number one, you know, there was like ten different rules and everyone. They were.
So to make sure clear, what you're stating is we add a position, but we're not eliminating anyone's job or if we are, we're going to offer them a separate position.
So there's currently, Sarah's currently, um, flip flops with Jessica. So that's going to impact her. We have to figure out, I mean, she's a valued employee. We have to figure out how to minimize the negative impact on her. Um, so her position will not be eliminated. We will look for ways, uh, to employ her and to put her in a spot that's valuable to her and to the district. We also talked about upstairs librarian position, uh, here in town for middle school, high school, and if that was needed, what we're going to do with that. And like I said, none of those decisions can be made until this decision is made and then we can talk, start having those more detailed conversations about what are we going to do with the other positions? Who's that gonna impact? How do we minimize the negative?
When, uh, the St. Genevieve Elementary construction work start, is that, I know we talked about possibly moving the library to open up some classroom space, so that is that still part of the possibility?
Absolutely. Part of the possibility will not happen until the end of the project. And so that is the end of the school year next year. We're hopeful, um, that we will have some funds to be able to, um, do some neat things in the library. Um, our architects have transitioned to library, uh, gymnasium to a library, uh, in the past and they, they brought some pictures of what that looks like. Those pictures look really, really expensive. So we may have to piece it together or do it slowly, um, but I think we can make that, make that into a really neat space. Uh, taking the bleachers out of that upper level up there and maybe making some cubbies or some, Harry, what do you call them? Maker spaces or some stem areas or, or something like that. Um, there's, there's a lot of possibility there. But that being said, we can't do any of that until the construction is done because I don't know how that building is going to be impacted. We just sawing through that concrete all along. You saw what happened at the middle school. Um, so getting through that process and being able to, to do something after the construction.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to the addition of a librarian position.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have the addition of some elementary positions.
Okay, um, with community counseling, um, day treatment, uh, leaving our district, um, we have to be able to deal with, uh, some student behaviors that are a little more advanced. And so looking around at other school districts or any of the conversation about, uh, community housing, including the district, our people are going out visiting other schools, tiered programs, uh, in their school districts, see how they were handling some things. Um, so they were able to do that, came back with some great ideas. Obviously, uh, we have to take those ideas and mesh them together. So I think Stephanie Gag, you were on some of those trips, um, in your packet, uh, you have a handout that has some pictures from those trips. So when the enrollment, we started talking about the tiered program and we started talking about what students it might impact. Uh, we started having that conversation with community counseling, day treatment, what their enrollment would look like and they have to have so many students participating in their program to make sense financially to remain viable. They decided that they couldn't do that, uh, given the framework. So we started investigating what, what might this program look like for us here in order to be able to not only, uh, address these behaviors, but help students gain the tools they need, um, to deal with those behaviors in order to improve those behaviors and be able to have those kids transition back out into the classroom and then be educated. Uh, because that's a piece that we've been struggling for a long time, because whether those behaviors take over a student's entire day and what is that education? So I asked, uh, Stephanie Gag and Stephanie Ram to come, uh, talk a little bit about what, what their ideas are about the program, just to give you a little, uh, snippet, what I'm recommending to see is, uh, proposal came to me and we've been working through this on what it might. So I'm proposing one certified teacher be added to Bloomsdale Elementary School, uh, for a tier two room. And then two teachers be added to St. Genevieve Elementary for a tier two room, tier three room. And then one paraprofessional be added that would float between those two rooms or could be assigned to those, to one of those rooms. Uh, that being said, the need may be there to request additional paraprofessional. But we need to see what that needs. Recommend positions that have the potential to be cut. It's not, I don't wanna do that, but I also wanna keep the door open for possibility that the need, our need might exceed our personnel and they have to come back. Give you some data to justify. So you all would like to speak a little bit about?
A lot more of the classroom data and I am more about. So even with the way day treatment was now, it's not. But yeah, it also led to two kids that had. And link qualified professional basis because over the last year, they changed the statute where it had a little thing with a lot of them out and says you can't qualify a child for behavior disorder or emotional disturbance due to trauma. It didn't used to say that now and so much of the behaviors that we're seeing through kids now is because of trauma. And if there isn't documentation of, um, those disturbances and mental health prior to the trial, that is harder to justify to those kids. So it's going away. Not just in our district. Test. You gotta. You gotta stop. You gotta get some kids. These men and hopefully prevent this. I would get important to math. Lots of lots and lots. Lot go lots and lots. Difficulties coming back with money. Coming back after a long break. So it is a soft start for them and they can utilize that room as a way to just get into a better headspace, ready to be in school. We've also talked about check-ins. Basically, it's just a familiar face. Kind of processes with them. How are you doing today? What are your struggles? What, how are you going to handle it if this happens? What happens? Manning with them before they go to class. And they can do that in the morning, lunch, um, before the end of the day, you know, all three, whatever that looks like. Um, we also do not currently have a great setup for R and R. Um, and this room is a space where they can have, you know, individualized desks. Now, now, this year three room, kiddos can be referred from Bloomsdale to come into town. Similar to what we're clear doing right now with, um, youth day treatment. Um, there'll be some supportive interactions between the teacher and the parents for mental health. So those kiddos that, um, are receiving psychiatry, medication management, therapy, case management, those kind of things. Um, the teacher will stay involved with the parents. Um, they can provide reports to psychiatrists on how well the child's doing, if medication is working, not working. That is really kind of imperative because a lot of times it keeps the parents. The kids don't have as big of behaviors at home they have in school. And so it really seems like actually. Initially, she doesn't do that. There's even complete. All the different areas through the culture. All of that kind of still leading them to copy. There's big impact on their act on the program. Uh, additionally, um, it also is true. We're really, our goal is while obviously is, um, we child, each child by child basis. We would ideally like to keep the time they spend in their short room. Um, we have some kiddos that for two, three years in the entry community, we see we can have that. We want those kiddos, um, to make some progress. And then start working on the transition, giving them the opportunity to use skills they've learned.
That was one of my questions because you'd come and talked to us before that our goal is to get these kids in education. Not to be in youth day treatment for three years. So I just want to make sure our program focuses on that.
Education is still going to be a very big part. Um, we do know that when behaviors are that big, it does get impacted when you know that. However, I think there's a way to do a steady incorporation of what money can be done when they're in a regulated state. And they manage those behaviors when they're dysregulated and doing a whole lot of skill development. Um, the goal in both of the tiers, even hands to the grade, and even what, um, our beginner support sessions on the teacher coach. Do, who assists the teachers this year one, is really to give skills. Um, a lot of behaviors were just them realizing why they're acting out. And what is, what is it something for purpose to sort of find a better way to express what is a certain one versus using the active behaviors, um, and getting a better image on that. A lot of times it's control. And they feel like their life is very out of control and they're looking for some control. Badness, they may be teach them is looking for where they get to make. Same, and they learn and to manage those behaviors and express themselves. More, in a more appropriate way. When you step on the floor, when you step off the desk, rubbing things around in the room. Running, a lot of times we have to. Um, we did dispatch the possibility of a small budget, but then the administrators also talked about a, um, owner's fund where we can help outfit these rooms. Um, also talking about, um, calling kits that can be pulled out to be used in different classrooms. Um, and also what they call, um, these. These hews. Thompson about walking out.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, and what those are, they, they are outfitted with blankets or a pillow and some hogs. Like fidgets and stress leaders and for kids who are typical runners, um, they know they won there. And they know where they won. We talked about giving a couple of those various places in the home. Um, all part of this kind of effort to meet to one, to two.
He talks about, uh, so if you have middle school, high school age students in tier three and they're ready for step down to tier two. Are they placing elementary buildings in as well or?
Right now, we're focused solely on the elementaries.
Okay.
We have their time. So we have SARS.
That's correct. Okay.
We have a lot of kind of flexibility at the high school, the primary school, those needs. I would like to expand almost more of a school program. Um, and it's kind of separate back from these kids that are getting like the SARS program for disciplinary reasons. Um, it, it, as it grows, right now, we're just really like kind of firing at the elementary level. For the reason of back in the years, all still there. And really impacting so much learning and consuming so much time, um, from a variety of people. And then also just really wearing down our teachers. And my role is absolutely, I want our teachers to be supported. I want them to feel like they have supports. And also we want to suspend skills so they don't get turned out. I mean, it's. Just need to, I mean, just need the profession, mostly because the behaviors are so big and they can't.
She gets bigger, traumatizing to the other children in the classroom as well. All the other kids in the classroom. With the tier two teacher or tier three, well, tier three, they would be in there, but the tier two teacher and the classroom. How they felt when Jimmy for the chair is also. Cause they do need to, they need to feel important to, to, you know, their mom and their child.
Well, will school-based therapy continue with community counseling center or? Okay, so it's really just the, the youth day piece of it as opposed to, okay?
And so, um, we, we did have a discussion with them. What they have said when they are talking about possibly doing a homeschooling program with the kids that are involved. Um, in case management and maybe a slightly higher level. It won't be the day treatment, but it would be like a two-hour after school. Um, we asked them possibly if we want another school-based therapist. Um, because our school-based therapists are usually full, um, by November, December. Uh, we asked if we, if they could possibly consider giving us another one. Um, the struggle right now is getting people fired. They already have both elementary ones, take different positions outside of the, and, and the, they have hired the one.
So is it only those children who have Medicaid are eligible for that?
No.
School-based therapy?
School-based therapy, they can, they can bill insurance. Um, the, the struggle with that, what we find is, um, for private insurance, the co-pays average from forty, sixty, eighty dollars per visit. Um, for the week they visit and some parents just, they can't afford that, right? Um, and there's just so many steps to it. Um, like they have to really have to be rolling. They have certain hours for that. Some number of sessions, involvement sessions. And so we lose some of them getting through that process. We're trying to. Financial is a big, big piece. Um, we lost a lot of private insurance bids. Um, we wanted to be able to stay at the, when the parents were not. And therapists are the specialists.
And this is me, more of a question for you then. So, uh, community council center, that's, it's Medicaid, so it's currently of no cost to the district, is that?
Are you talking about youth day treatment?
Correct, as it currently exists.
Yeah, Medicaid runs through the, the parents and children.
Okay, all through them. Okay, because I mean, you and I know, we all know that the number one thing we hear from teachers is behaviors are just rampant and they, they, they need support. So, you know, what do we need to do to make sure they get support?
Yeah, and there's, you know, anytime you have a change like this, there's some concern. Because a couple of years ago, all our administrators were doing is answering radio. And we do not return to that. We do not want to return to their, majority of their day spent chasing. You know, there's going to be some growing pains. This, it's nice listening to smart people who are invested in what trauma is. And what do we need to do at tier two? What do we need to do for tier? But we also need to understand that this is, this is a new program. We're going to be on some road. We're going to have to communicate with not only staff and staff, but also Jessica and Tara. And bring those behavior specialists in and communicate with teacher. All be on the same page. What are the structure? How do we get to a team? Steph hit it on the head with, you know, supporting our teachers. What, what do we do when these behaviors come up? Because we can't have bright, smart teachers being worn out and leaving the profession, leaving our district. Because the behaviors are just so frustrating. I had a long conversation, uh, with Stephanie out of Bloomsdale, uh, about the frustration that comes with a student. Who flashes out. And I think an old school way of thinking of it, and I hate to admit I'm bringing some of that with me, is you're going to do what I say. You're going to do what I say now. With kids that have trauma as their background, she educated me to this. You can't have emotional reaction. I think Steph, you told me you can't have a negative emotional reaction and you can't have a, have to be flat. You have to, and so they're bringing an expertise to this that we, we need, it needs to bleed into the classroom and to our teachers. And it needs to be a program that can see some hope. That our administrators see that, how can I go back during that? So I have high hopes and we're talking to experts.
That doesn't look like I'm saying with youth day triggers or anything wrong. But you have to imagine the half of their day spent in therapy, in therapy activities where they were coping there of their trauma, of their problem. And then that other half of the day you're like, okay, let's learn. And you couldn't get those kids to be able to learn because they, they were in a state of agitation. Because they were trying to need to deal with those, the things that were the emotional struggles that they have. While I still feel that that's a very big component, I don't know if it needs to take up. I still want them there and I still want them seeing psychiatrists. I still want them walking through those absolutely, that that is going to make them successful. However, we also don't need helping there half of the day, every single day, and then expecting to be.
And I can tell you from the other side of it, the transitions thus far of our current situation back into most of setting to learn of not the situation. They have been exhausting. And we try to figure out doing. For everyone's conversations daily.
Stephanie and Stephanie, when you visited, um, other schools, did, I mean, I'm assuming they, there's a variety of ways it looks. There's not one way it looks, but did you kind of feel like you came away with some really sound logistics? Like for us, this might be how it looks, like how the kids will transition or how?
We took a lot of components and, um, a lot was kind of having to. Before to give programs, uh, and some of us have gone to try to, um, giving education and trainings. Where they talked about their own programs and we're hearing about mine, they're out in, in this range, the area. And those and bringing that back to them. A lot is pretty consistent. Um, there is usually a process of effort today at tier one. Um, different variety of things tried, um, before we utilize tier two. Um, and then when we go, when, and then like I said, those tier two rooms look very similar. They're very flexible, they're very fluid, um, hence we're being in and out and all of them in and out for different reasons. Um, whether, and we do, it depends on what we get. Soft starts and, um, and, um, entry works and, and checking and, you know, just carrying a colored folder down. So when they walk in there with their assignments in a colored folder, that the tier two room teacher knows why they're coming. Red, they have a glow up. Yellow, they look like they're running low soon. Whenever you're going to ask things like that, ask some of the things that we decided and we've developed, we have our own ideas. Whenever, you're going to have things like that, ask some of the things that we decided we pre-developed, we got our own ideas. There's, multiple schools have like a ladder system where they progress out of tier three and back into the regular classroom. Where it's taking a couple of different those and like, you know, to help me think this a little faster. So those programs are, I mean, it's always seemed very, very consistent. Pretty similar.
Tracking the data to what those kids, especially in tier two, and the interventions seeing the frequency that they are having to go to the different, whether it's top down or with all these behaviors. During the decrease in frequency and so on. It's just convenient to that.
I see it mentioned in the proposal also, but we have the room that we need for this. Okay, I'm also looking at the two in the second.
Don't, don't ask Mrs. Gag about room, she needs more room.
I, I believe in transparency, so I, I do want to say we, we've got to find something. And just so everyone knows, I mean, we're estimating just staff costs about quarter of a million dollars into this. So that's on an annual basis and I I think it's great that we're investing in not just those kids, but our teachers and other kids who are seeing, like you mentioned, their kids seeing the trauma and just kind of happen. So this is, I think, you know, it's worthy to point out that, you know,
in addition to our social worker, we've added an SRO or we're going to add an SRO. We've added behavioral specialist interventionist. Just $250,000. We have to do something for, we always talk about our kids and we have to do this for our kids, but we have to support our teachers. I appreciate all the work that was put into this. I know you guys visited other schools. Everything that's put into this work, at least from my perspective, worked with community counseling center to try and resolve a lot of issues and, and this is what we've come up with. We have to help make them successful.
I think some of our teachers could use some of those.
Can you reach through the drive thru? Any other questions?
I came with lots of questions. So I'll make a motion to approve the addition of the following positions. One, certified position at Bloomsdale Elementary School. Two, certified positions in one parent's position. It seems any other. Can you get one of those?
Yeah.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much.
I think it was well received. Onto roofing replacement. Yes. Back to the grind. We received some bids through the Omni National IPA Cooperative Purchasing Group. And since we are a member of that purchasing group, we don't have to go through the bid process, they do. So they brought these bids over, Mr. Carl and I reviewed them. This is our annual roofing update. We have a really a five year plan, keeping our roofs up to date, patched, sealed, or updated as needed. Really happy with our facilities plan regarding roofing. Budgeted for about $600,000 for this particular portion of it. And as you can see, the bid coming in benefited the district. Really happy with what we're doing. Supplies were in high demand and they weren't able to get supplies, they were behind on their jobs and I think now they're catching up. So he had pretty good prospects. I would recommend when you're shaking place. They did the last, yeah. Yep.
Is agents, you know, contact local people or?
Yeah, and I think school roofing is a different animal. So having a local vendor is a different. Just a different scale. I think it's pretty stark. I don't know that they would. Through the bidding process. And I would have this, then what I've considered.
I have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye, may I pose?
Next, we have pause for a bit.
Yes, we've received three bids overall. I have worked closely with our finance coordinator, Crystal Roth. Really, some of the investment components of the bids aren't as applicable to us. They may be a little complex. So we kind of set back and decided to give them more stuff, items in the packet, table. So first we'll put together a summary. Really, we wanted good customer service, designated local contact, employee benefits, just checking. Some other. Crystal went through them all and there were pros and cons for each. But as we teased it down, started looking at some of the specifics of the bids. She came in. She was really pleased with the details, thanks to proposed editing local contact. Meeting as needed to showcase a strong commitment to collaborating closely with the district. Their checking interest rates are competitive at 75%. They can fill all the requirements, offer those additional benefits. Free check and agency. It's possible to carry, so I like it. So five years.
Any other questions? I have a motion on second to approve Bloomsdale bank for a five year contract getting to life. These personnel changes approved in post session divided into graphing. Yes.